I'd like to call the -- to order the January 2, 2018 Lake Mills City Council meeting. Would you all rise for the Pledge of Leeches?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the great soul of liberty and justice for all.
It takes us to item number two, roll call.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritsch?
Here.
Okay, corrections and/or approval of the city council meeting minutes of December 5, 2017. Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the council minutes of December 5, 2017.
Do I have a second? Doug, is that you?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve. Would you call roll? Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
I'll see.
Motion passed three zero.
Okay. Under correspondence, does anyone have something they'd like to share? Quiet.
It was very quiet, yeah.
Everybody was busy with holiday things. We did have a little vandalism in the park. Somebody decided to steal the extension cord for the Christmas tree. So, we hope whoever took it really needed it, but we hope it doesn't happen again. And it's been replaced and -- but it was a disappointing thing to have happen in Lake Mills. Questions and public comments? The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. Would anyone like to speak at public comment? Nope. Seeing no one, we will close public comment and move on to the city manager's report. Steve?
I don't have anything special tonight. I've provided the police department reports. Any questions? I don't have anything.
Okay. And does anyone have any questions for Steve? I don't think there's anything I have that won't come up at the meeting itself, so... Okay. Item number seven, acceptance of minutes of the Joint Rock Lake Committee, April 4, 2017. Joint Rock Lake Committee, May 2, 2017. Joint Rock Lake Committee minutes from June 6, 2017. Joint Rock Lake Committee minute -- meeting minutes from August 1, 2017. And the Joint Rock Lake Committee minutes from October 3, 2017. And from November 7, 2017 of the Joint Rock Lake Committee. Also, the Police and Fire Commission minutes from November 16, 2017. And we will place those on file. Okay. Taking us to item eight, council business. We have miscellaneous licenses. Would you like to read that item, Misty?
Sure. We've got tavern operators license for Carly Woodzine, Deborah Liebman, Laurel Danielson, Matthew Hovey, Ryan Cool, and Anthony Amaral.
Okay. So, those are the people that are requesting tavern operators licenses. Is there a motion to grant those?
I'll make a motion to approve tavern operator licenses for the names that were read off.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay, good. All right. Well, this evening we have a resolution that is to recognize and appreciate an appreciation of service for Renee Friar, who has taken retirement from the police department.
Friday will be her last day, this coming Friday.
This coming Friday?
Yes. And I did talk to her earlier today, and she wasn't going to be able to make it tonight, but thanked everybody for the recognition.
Okay, well, we will miss her. She was a real bright light in the fire -- in the fire department, a bright light in the police department. And we hope that she enjoys her retirement and hope that the last few days are good ones for her, so... Thank you. Do we need to make a resolution? Someone want to make a motion?
I'll read the title first and then...
Yeah.
Does that work?
Sounds good.
Resolution 18-01, in appreciation of public service to the city of Lake Mills from dispatcher Renee Friar.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 18-01.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. So, now we have item C. Would you read that resolution, please?
Title's Resolution 18-02, authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate located in the Lake Mills Business Park.
Okay. All right. Now, Steve, do you want to give us any background besides or in addition to what you've already given us?
You want to do a motion first, or you want to...
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve resolution 18-02.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, so now we can discuss it.
Right. We received an offer from Neil Shade through J. Lane for $50,000 on a three-and-a-half-acre lot immediately south of the Light Water Building on Industrial Drive. And Neil is here tonight, so if you have any questions of Neil, he's available. It's in our industrial park. It's its own I-4. He gave you the history of the industrial park. We've been asking $17,000. He offered $14,285.71. And I went over the reasons why we weren't charging full price like we had in the last one. So, the overall lot size is about 268 by 560, something like that. Comes out to about three-and-a-half acres. Are there any other questions? Motion authorizes staff to make this -- to finalize the sale.
Okay. Do we want to have him on the screen?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Any questions for him?
No, I'm good.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for coming tonight. It's much appreciated so that... But we don't appear to have any questions to ask you or unless you have something you wanted us to know. Nope? Okay. So, then I guess we can call the question.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
There you go. Thank you for coming again.
Thank you.
Okay, item D. Discussion and decision on request from Lake Mills Main Street Program. And there's a Katie back there in the corner. Would you like to read?
City Council Motion 18-1-1, authorizing the use of Lake Mills Community Center by the Lake Mills Main Street Program.
Okay. And we do have the motion in front of us in its entirety. Do we want to have someone make?
I will make the motion to approve. Yeah, which one is it?
It's the 18-1-1.
To approve motion 18-1-1.
Second.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Would we like Katie to speak since she's here? Oh, come on up, Katie.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules then.
Do we have to? Oh, we do. I'm sorry.
Well, it's an agenda item. She's responding to an agenda item.
That's so we don't have to.
We normally do.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to allow her to come up and speak.
Second.
Okay. Would you...
Mrs. Fritsch? Aye. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Well, thanks for considering our request. This is what we do every year with the Knickerbocker Ice Festival. We have a trivia night in the community center the night before the Saturday event, so my request is to use the community room for the trivia night.
Okay. And that is on what date?
Friday, February 2nd.
Okay. It's not in the resolution, is it?
Yes. No, 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 it's not.
Should it be?
It's in the application.
Yeah. They get filed, they all get filed together, correct?
Yes, because it's referencing it as an attached document.
Yep.
And the reason it's here tonight is because it's a fundraiser, and the current community center policies and procedures say that if it's a fundraiser, it has to come to council for approval.
Okay. Any other discussion about the item? Nope. Roll call roll.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay, item E, discussion decision on temporary fencing for country campers.
City Council Motion 18-1-1-2, Country Campers Temporary Use Permit, W-7419, County Highway V in the town of Lake Mills.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve 18-1-1-2.
Can I ask a question before we second this?
The motion's on the table now, so we're not going to second it.
What's that?
The motion's on the table now, so we're not going to second it. Second, we can have the discussion.
Well, the question really is, if we're doing the motion, do we have to put in a location? Because we're looking at two locations in the motion.
What ultimately we should do is put this on the table and then motion to amend it when there's an appropriate time.
Then I will second it.
Okay. So, we have... You want to... Do we want to read any of this? Or is it fine just as... Is it to discuss? We want to discuss it, obviously.
Well, now there's a motion and a second, so... Yeah, and you should... The motion does allow either site. The question wasn't both sites, but one site.
Right.
There was a preferred site by city staff, but either one of them could work if the council wanted to go that way. Todd from Country Campers is here tonight, so if you have any questions of him. But the memo basically spelled out that there were two sites available that Todd had available to him and that...
He recommended one.
Both of them required some type of screening for the type of use that he had. 405 CP Avenue already has fenced. It doesn't necessarily have the opaque, but if he sets it back far enough, it shouldn't be a problem on that big site. It's also closer to his use, less residential around it. The other site has a lot of trees on it. I don't think that he wants to get to the point where he's running the risk of damage from trees, branches breaking off and hitting his trailers that he's storing. So, I guess from my standpoint, I was strongly advising that we go with 405 CP Avenue.
Yeah, that's...
The one site is adequate for the amount of storage any needs?
Can you come up to the mic, Todd?
We'll suspend the rules to allow him to come up and speak and make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Yeah. First of all, I bought the business three and a half years ago, and I really, the city has been tremendous to work with and very supportive. I'm trying to aggressively grow the business. We've added significant staff there. We've had a... This whole industry's kind of rebounded nicely. Our challenge is now the manufacturers can't keep up, so you have to order products early in the year and get them up here. Otherwise, if you waited till after the shows that we go to, for example, you wouldn't get trailers till June or July. And we have this thing called winter, kind of affects the season a little bit. So, what I'm looking for is just some convenient storage. It's all our inventory, so it's not for profit. It's not customers' inventory. We're just parking them. We'll manage the space. We'll back them in nice and neat. I'll keep it plowed. So, it's really what we're looking for, just something that's logistically clean for us. By April 15th, or at the latest, April 30th, we'll have them all out of there, and it'll be done, so...
So, are both these spots rental locations, or do you own them?
No, I would be renting them from the owners. I've already worked with both owners, and they've given us the thumbs up. The one is Mr. Meckler in town here, and the other one is Steve Sterwold for the other property that's fenced in, so...
Is just one of the sites adequate for the amount of storage that you need?
Yep. Yep, it should be just fine. I mean, we'll continue to stack them, but by the time we get into April, May, we'll be getting them out the door, hopefully.
So, in other words, this is just one-time usage?
It's temporary. Yeah, I am actively looking for a more permanent solution here. So, this is really just a one-time usage through mid-April. So, I'd like to not have to, you know, put in privacy fencing if at all possible.
Well, I just want to express that I agree that I think the 415 North CP is the more desirable from city point of view.
Okay.
So, if it's not a difference for you, that's the way I think we should go.
Nope, we can start relocating tomorrow. Turn out.
That was the location without the tree line or without the...
It doesn't have any trees, and it does have a fence.
Yeah.
It's more of the industrial park area.
Yeah, it's in the industrial park, right across from Crystal Farms.
It's actually closer for you, too.
Little bit better location for us, yep, so...
Anybody else have questions? So, we would need to make an amendment to the motion for that address?
Well, what are we going to limit the motion to? Are we just going... How are we going to amend it specifically?
Yeah, we also have to... Would like to limit it to a time period.
I believe the time period is clearly...
It says April 30th in the motion.
Yeah, I think I have quite a few conditions on there. The only one I didn't put in there was which site, because obviously you guys are going to debate that.
Yeah.
So, is the only addition needed that we need to clarify exactly what site? Or is there a limitation statement regarding... I believe it had been interpreted that there were... It applied to both sites at one point.
So, would it be a motion to delete the 630 Jefferson Street?
It's not...
Yeah, still amended.
Oh, it's in the memo. I'm sorry, I got into the memo.
There is nothing in the motion that states an address.
Nothing about an address there.
Correct.
It's in the recommendations.
If I were doing it, I'd do it in the first whereas of the subject site described in the application and just put in there that... Described as? Yeah, 415 CP Avenue.
I move that recommendation.
So, that's a motion to amend, adding the address of 415 CP Avenue.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Doesn't first whereas.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Nope.
Then vote on the amendment, please.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Any discussion on the motion itself before we vote on it? You're fine.
It's... Now, it's amended, so as amended, we can vote on that.
Yep.
Okay. So, let's call the roll on that.
So, that'd be just be the first motion.
The first motion.
Sure.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Now, it's done. We've got a little parliamentary action in there.
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
And thank you for coming. Appreciate the input. And good luck with your business. Okay. That takes us to item F, discussion and decision on appointment of election inspectors. You want to read that?
City Council Motion 18-1-1-3, Appointment of Election Inspectors. This is for the 2018-2019 term. We have to do this every two years. Both dominant parties can submit a list of names. Typically, we get lists from both parties. This term, I only received something from the Democrat Party. However, the individuals that were appointed previously from the Republican Party's list, I've moved over into my undesignated. They still wanted to continue working. They just weren't appointed through a party, so they're in that list. And there's nobody new. Everybody that's on the list has been, has worked at elections with me in the past.
What's the difference between election inspectors and special voting deputies?
So, for the next item, special voting deputy, the election inspectors are actually... They're appointed to work at the elections. Special voting deputies are the individuals that can go into certain care facilities, nursing homes, to do absentee voting, which we run two absentee votings at those facilities prior to every election. So, they have a little bit different requirements, different training, and those that we'll talk about on the next item are individuals who have participated in that in the past as well. So, it's just basically renewing everybody. And I've gone through the ones that are listed. Every... Has all those individuals stated they did want to continue working elections. There's a few that didn't, so they're not on the list.
Okay.
And this is more than enough for the next two years. If something were to change, we could bring them back, and I can also make appointments.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve?
So, move.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, call the roll on that.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Thank you. And then we have item G, which you could read for us.
City Council Motion 18-1-1-4, Appointment of Special Voting Deputies. As I just stated, these are just the individuals that actually go into the care facilities. There's different rules. Everybody's familiar and trained. Two of the fours are actually myself and Heather, the deputy clerk, and the other two, Jen Christian and Jill Daring, have the most training of all the election inspectors, and they're both actually certified to be chief election inspectors, so...
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move motion 18-1-1-4.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Everybody's fine? Call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
Okay. I just, in advance, would like to thank everyone that's volunteered to do it because that's an important job and takes time out of people's busy lives, so thank you. Okay. That takes us to item nine, recommendations for future agendas. Do we have anything that we want to put on the agenda that isn't already there? We have some items already on that agenda.
Your next meeting in January is going to be a study session, and it will be... Well, we're debating because I think it's going to take... The items that we currently have on there, I think, will take more than four hours, which I think is too long. But right now, we're looking at the feasibility report on the restaurant and the cabins, the modifications to Sandy Beach, and the changes in the trailer park, which are pretty extensive and will be quite a long conversation, I imagine. And then the other one will be the Mill Pond dredging study. And that has some very... You'd be surprised, I guess, what comes out of a idea, you know, just basically dredging, and then how it gets expanded into, well, if you do this, then this occurs, and if you do this, this occurs. And, you know, so there are discussions about raising the bridges and building extra docks, and so the conversation gets a lot more than just how much it's going to cost to dredge it, or whether we should dredge it, or what our options are for dredging it. So, again, it's a study session. You'll probably get a lot of information. We may kind of just do the two presentations and then set up another study session to really discuss them more after you've had a chance to read it more in-depth and after you get a better knowledge of what guys were talking about when they did their presentations. But that'll be up on the 16th. And then the 30th is the goal-setting session, the first one.
Okay.
There should be two other ones after that, but that'll be the first one that'll get us going. Staff has been working very hard on a couple of projects that we're going to try and give some information to you about. They've been working on logic models and flow charts and service...
Process.
Project lists. So, I'll give you a little bit of an idea of, like, just take a basic annexation and see how many different steps are involved and how many different people are involved. When you think about an annexation, you don't think about all the other things that have to be contacted and listed out and gone through. Or elections, where, like Misty said tonight, what's the difference between a voting deputy and inspectors? All the training that they have to go through, how much time they spend in training, how many lists there are that we have to go through, because you have to clean up the voting register list every time and there... So, when you talk about elections, you think about showing up and voting. When you talk about it to Misty, you've got a long list of chores that have to be done, and they need to be laid out, and there are all kinds of these things. Well, if this occurs, this occurs, you know? And when you talk about, well, is the election done? Well, we still got all these absentee ballots that could come in, and we have all these ballots out. How provisionals get handled and all that type of stuff, nobody else thinks about, but probably Misty. And so, to get those types of things in place so that you have a better idea of how how much capacity versus capabilities we have. Because we're getting, you know, every time they change a voting law, every time we do something different at Public Works, every time we do something different in the parks, every time we build a new street or build a new building, there's always additional cost to us that we have to figure out who's going to handle it. And actually, council probably doesn't think about that as much as the rest of us do, you know? When you ask us to pick up garbage on... Around the park, you may not think it takes a lot of time, but now we're balancing out, well, when we're doing this, that means that there's a certain amount of time left to do the peers. So, how do we get the peers in and the time required? So how do we get the piers in and the time required? How do we get the cemeteries mowed? How do we get the, then there are all these other chores that start pyramiding down. Now, you made a choice to have us pick up the garbage, but you really didn't make a choice on all the other items that don't get done. That's kind of a decision that ends up being made by Rob. And those, those kinds of decisions should be prioritized and said, hey, maybe mowing the cemetery is more important than picking up the garbage. And so those are the balances that you have to, that we, we really don't spend a lot of time discussing, so those will be out there.
Yeah, those will be nice to see.
The, we really don't have a lot for the first meeting in February, but I'm sure that it'll start to fill up because that'll be the next actual action meeting that we have for, in the month. And then the second meeting in February, we're doing the composting study and the multi-use study presentations.
Is multi-use ready to go?
Uh, it's pretty close. I've got the report from the architect and I've got the preliminary report from the committee and I'm working on that to try and, to fill it out a little bit, because there's, you know, there's a lot of information, I think, that still needs to be added in there before it finalizes. We'll send it back to the committee as soon as I'm done with it and then they get to look at it and determine if they want to approve it. If it does, it'll be up. And then we'll have two additional goal-setting branding sessions.
Are they scheduled at the end of February and the end of March?
We had looked at February and March. I guess we'll have to figure out how we're going to work that in. Probably March will be, won't have any problem with. February, we might be a little tight, so I guess we'll have to see how that goes.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
February being a little bit shorter month always causes those types of problems.
So maybe it'll be March and April.
So for the, the next meeting, the work sessions, do we, those are open, correct?
They're open, but they're not televised.
That's what I was going to ask. Do you, does anybody see any benefit in that, to having it televised? Do you think folks would like to hear what's going on if they can't make it here? I'm just throwing it out there. I, I really don't.
Well, we will be, we will bring it out once it, once, this is the first time we're looking at this. It won't be the only time we look at it.
No, definitely not.
Yeah.
So there would be a lot of, maybe a lot of changes before, you know, since I think this is like, we're going to see the initial thing and then there might be something in there that all five of us go, no way. Then, and probably everybody in town would say, no way. And all of a sudden, we've got a problem because everybody thinks that's what we're going to do. But then it will come to a regular council meeting, right? Whatever we decide, we...
You can't do anything in a study session. A study session is basically to allow for a more free-flowing conversation than the structure that we normally have at council meetings.
So, you know, people are invited to come.
But I withdraw my question. I was just kind of curious what everybody thought.
Are the consulting firms who put it together going to be present at that meeting?
Yes.
And we can have them come again.
As often as you want.
At, at a later date when we know what form we feel is the right form and then we can do it publicly where we get feedback from the public.
Okay.
But I, I think, I'd hate to get everybody upset about something they don't have to get upset about.
Yeah, and I was thinking the other way, that if they hear about it in the grape, in the grapevine and they don't realize there was a study session that they could have attended, they may, it may get blown out of proportion that way, too. So I just don't know which is the word, which is the better of two evils.
My experience is, is that to be able to sit down and have a, a good conversation at a study session tends to generate some more frank conversation, allows some ideas to go back and forth. If you sit and commit at the first meeting because of what's said at a, a meeting that's broadcast and you have to stick to that, it's pretty sad. Because as you think about it and you review it and you've talked to other people, there, there are quite a bit of options that start opening up and you start thinking about it, you know, Rob brings up this. And so we've sat down in five meetings and we've gone over this from top to bottom and we've discussed every possible issue that we see and we've, think we pretty well worked all those problems out. There, there are some pretty unique proposals that are going to be in there and so when it hits you initially, you need to be open-minded and think about it for a while.
You're not supposed to laugh like that, Dan.
Well, I mean, he said unique.
Well, then, okay, so I guess what I'm kind of thinking in my head, we have this work session and then would we think that if, after that, it would come to a council meeting that would be public for discussion?
Well, I, I'm going to go back further because goal-setting sessions, you have this one, you have composting, you have the Mill Pond, I mean, you've got...
A lot of issues.
The multi, multi-use facility, I think we determined that it was thirty-five million dollars worth of projects. That doesn't include our regular CIP.
So that's why the goal session is really important.
Yeah.
We have to do some prioritizing and then from the prioritizing, then we can take a look at what we do or don't do. I mean...
Well, I, I think that they're all good ideas and eventually they should be done. It's when.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And, because you, you can't afford all of them at one time. I mean, that's the discussion we've been having from the beginning. It's how and when and where. And so you want to be careful and you want to be able to have good conversation about that and work it out and think about it and be able to think about it long enough to defend your positions and argue them and, and then we just have to go from there. But there, you're not going to be able to do everything that comes out of all these studies.
Okay.
At least not in the next five years.
Yeah, so I guess if people are really interested and want to hear the first conversations around this stuff, you need to come to the meeting because it won't be televised.
No.
And we aren't going to be making any decisions about anything at any of these meetings because they're all work sessions.
Yep.
And, and because they all inter...
Yeah, they all intertwine and they all have to come through as a, something through council to be approved.
You're going to need a long-term finance plan and a long-term capital improvement plan and you're going to have to, I mean, all of them are, you know, like the Mill Pond takes a lot of permitting. Sandy Beach will take a lot of, you have to move a lot of people in and out and you have to do some other permitting and, and those types of things based on the proposals that are in there. So it's, it's a lot to digest. I mean, it's, I've been looking at it since August and it's still, every time I read it, that something changes and we, I think, well, we've modified it so many times now that what came out initially and what's out there as a proposal now is really substantially different. And if I gave you all the paperwork, you'd, it would be this tall, just on Sandy Beach.
Will we be getting a paper copy of it or will it be...
No, you'll get a paper copy. Because some of it's hard to read on the...
Okay. So next meeting, are we looking at a different starting time for the next meeting?
Misty would like to, yes.
Yeah, right now, I think, I've, I've polled a couple of the council members and it looks like we could start at six. Start it a little bit earlier, but still make it so that it didn't interfere with anybody's other commitments and work schedules. So we'll be double-checking with, with you two and, and Vicky as well, just to make sure that'd work, but I think six o'clock would be a good start time.
Well, I would think, yeah, I agree, you need to check, but at least for us, we just have to get going faster to get here by six, that's all there.
It's been pretty typical, I think, with work sessions starting at six o'clock, so...
And then will we designate a certain amount of time for one item and a certain amount of time for another?
I think that's what we're going to have to do.
Because we could go on forever with any of the above.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that and then...
Yeah, there, there are like five different phases to the Sandy Beach one alone and you could get on a tangent on one and spend, well, like we did, five hours.
Okay. All right, so six o'clock it will be and the items on next Tuesday, next, not next Tuesday, the next Tuesday meeting, which is the sixteenth, will be which items? The Sandy Beach?
Sandy Beach, which includes the trailer park feasibility study and...
The restaurants.
Yeah, the restaurant and the...
Everything down at Sandy Beach.
Cabins and, yes.
And then the second part will be, we, you said we'll...
The Mill Pond. The Mill Pond study.
The Mill Pond. Okay, so, and we'll let you decide how much time we should allow for each of those staff, okay?
I know that some of the downtown businesses will be interested in the Mill Pond study.
Mm-hmm. And so...
Can we, pardon me, can we get kind of an overview of each proposal in that first presentation, the whole thing? You know what I mean? Rather not get too detailed and then start getting into the details.
Is there such an animal?
Well, you should just, I'm looking at an overview to get an idea of what the whole thing is, the different parts and how they fit together and then getting into the details without getting bogged down in the details.
I think that there are probably four distinct pieces to the Sandy Beach one. And...
Would it be best, better to put the Mill Pond first and the Sandy Beach second? Because the Mill Pond, we will have some people, like you said, downtown that are specifically interested in that. What if we did that at six o'clock?
I, I still think we need to set time limits on them. It wouldn't matter which one came first, as long as we have a time limit on it, because I think either one of them could go for the full-time period.
Well, I would like to do the Mill Pond first. That way, too, if there are people who want to come, but they work till six o'clock and then they can't get here, you know, for the, for the other one, you know, I'm thinking we might have more people interested in Sandy Beach project than in the Mill Pond. Would you have a problem with that?
No.
Am I the only one who thinks that?
Maybe that would be six o'clock and half dozen of them. Yeah. That's fine.
It would also get our brains going because I think it would be easier for me personally to talk about the Mill Pond, which isn't quite as big a thing. I mean, it's big enough, but it's not the same as Sandy Beach in my eyes.
That works for me. It may change our mind after that.
Yeah, there's, there's quite a bit to it, but it's only one distinct project.
Yeah.
Well, that would be my recommendation, but unless somebody wants it the other way, I can do either.
Doesn't make any difference.
That's fine.
Okay. Well, let's do the Mill Pond at six then and then you decide when, what time we need to start the other half. Okay?
Yep.
Maybe give us a bathroom break for five minutes so we can come back in that timeframe. Okay, so that'll be the sixteenth of January here and any public is welcome to come and we'll just go from there. Okay. Is that it then? Anybody have anything else? Otherwise, we're looking at item ten. Let's see. Convening into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin stats, nineteen eighty-five per N one, per N G, conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to be involved. Do we, we need a motion, right? Motion to move into closed session.
So move. Second.
Okay. Any discussion about doing that? All right, would you call the roll on that?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Motion passed four zero.
And we will reconvene, but we will not reconvene in here. We'll just reconvene after we're done and, and then we will adjourn the complete agenda at that time, so. And thank you to everybody who's watching out there and if I can find my little gavel, we are in closed session.